I'd like to call the Tuesday, June the 13th, Alexander County Board of Education to meeting, meeting to order. At this time, I'll say anybody viewing it online, we've had some issues this afternoon with board docs, and so if you're trying to view our agenda and it does go down, that is not our school system's fault, it's our hosting service that hosts that information. So it'll hope, it's up now, hopefully it stays that way. Just want to put that out there. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Grant Sizemore, our student body president, son of Eric and Angela Sizemore, and also I'll throw in there the Cougar mascot in the fall and winter sports seasons, as well as Taylor Brown, student body vice president, parents are John and Morgan and Amber Brown. If I could get these students to come up and lead our pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you two for giving up your summer break to start.
Thank you.
Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved approved.
Got a motion, board member Ryan, second board member Dagan Hart. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval of agenda say aye. Any opposed? Agenda carries. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our honors and recognition portion.
Thank you Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Agüez, board members, and audience. I'm going to do something a little differently tonight. I normally would ask one of you board members to help me, but tonight, I'd like for Crystal Hope to come up and assist with this recognition. We are honored to recognize one of our teachers tonight with the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching CTE Teacher of the Year Award. Mr. Glenn Eckert with Horace Mann sponsors this award locally. So, Mr. Eckert, we are honored you are here, and I would ask for you to please come up and help with the award as well. The NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year process was developed to honor and retain excellent CTE teachers in North Carolina's public schools. Each district can nominate one teacher, which will continue into regional and state competitions. Candidates for this award show excellence and contributions to student success, innovations in CTE, and leadership in the local and greater CTE community. We are proud to announce that Angie Ford is the 2022-2023 Alexander Schools Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year. Please come forward, Mrs. Ford. If all of you will stay up here, I'm going to continue telling a little bit of the awesome things that I can share about Mrs. Ford. She has been teaching for 14 years and currently teaches health science and nursing fundamental classes at ACHS. Over Ms. Ford's tenure as a teacher and department chair, she has expanded and improved the nursing program for students. Ms. Ford has high expectations and also builds strong relationships with students, and I can tell you, when they are inducted into the National Honor Society, you can tell that you've built those relationships by the way that they interact with you. As a former healthcare worker, Mrs. Ford knows the industry's demands, and is thorough and diligent in teaching high school students proper methods in preparation for clinical settings. Mrs. Ford works hard to ensure quality school clinical experiences happen. Through hurdles faced from the pandemic and vaccination requirements, Mrs. Ford adapted her classroom and doubled the number of lab stations at the school to ensure students could have hands-on skills practice. When two local nursing homes and another in a neighboring county would not allow high school students to enter the facility for clinicals this year, Mrs. Ford persisted and found a willing partnership across county lines. In the fall of 2022, 100% of Mrs. Ford's students earned their nurse aid certification, which is typical of her rigorous program. So pretty close to 100 in the spring, all but one. And it was a larger group. Good, good. Thank you for these tidbits. See why I wanted her to help me here? This dedication and steadfast commitment to students and her program are what makes Mrs. Angie Ford stand out as a teacher of excellence. We are so proud of you, Angie, and we are pleased to present this award. You are most deserving. Please join me in congratulating Angie Ford. And this hangs at the high school. It is the Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year, and teachers are listed by year. You have already made the plaque. So we will be able to celebrate you for many years to come. Congratulations.
Great job, Angie. Great job.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's a good job. Congratulations, Ms. Ford. You're very deserving. At this time, we have reached the public comment portion of our agenda. Do we have any public comment? No public comment. All right. Board members, you have your consent agenda in your board docs. What's the pleasure of board approval of consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, board member Reese, second board member Agüez. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Consent agenda is approved. All right, I would like to recognize Alexander Central High School Principal Jacob Lael at this time for our Alexander Central High School update.
All righty. Good evening Chairman Robinson, Chairman, Vice Chairman Agüez, Dr. Heffner, fellow board members. It's good to see you guys again. I think I stood here this time last year, probably two weeks. So finished up one year as the principal at Alexander Central High School, and very thankful for the opportunity. I would like to take this chance and this opportunity to share a little bit about our school's progress and our accomplishments this school year. Do you want to try that? We do this every year. All right. Here are core beliefs, and these are shared in every staff newsletter. They're also on every faculty meeting agenda that we have. Every gathering, we post these core beliefs, and I'm not going to go through all of them here this evening, but I do want to speak on one, and that is the core belief that challenges help us learn and grow, and at Alexander Central High School, we will fail forward. I think we all make mistakes. We have to overcome those. This year, we spent a lot of time identifying our areas for improvement, refining our strategies for the future, and simply put, learning from our failures. I think that's what it's all about. Ultimately, when you take risks, you're going to have some failures. I just wanted to kind of set the theme this evening. Next slide, please. There's a quote on the board here by John Hattie, and I would ask that you follow along with that. Basically, at the end of that quote, it says that the number one factor in student achievement is collective teacher efficacy. So to build on that, I just feel like this quote accomplishes the work that we have been doing this school year, promoting collaboration and a shared sense of responsibility among our teachers. I fully believe that when our teachers share their expertise, learn from one another, and engage in discussions about effective practices, our students will benefit from it. Coming out of COVID, one of our main missions was to remove the isolation and remove the islands, because they just naturally formed, and I'll build on that here a little bit more in just a second. Next slide, please. Some of you may know this young man. His name is Francisco. This is my favorite picture that I've seen. Susan Matthews caught this during our kickball tournament with our Extend One kids at the softball field. But I asked that you read the quote and then look at the image. Ultimately, I feel like our staff, our students, they both have so much potential, and we are constantly looking for ways to tap into that potential. We want to empower them and encourage their personal and professional growth, and I feel like this image of Francisco embodies what I'm talking about. After a great kick at our kickball game, he turned to the crowd, and at that moment, he saw them cheering him on. It was a special moment because their belief in him fostered confidence, and ultimately gave him the strength to perform at a high level and on the biggest stage possible in his high school career. It's a wonderful moment, and I just wanted to share that quote, because ultimately, and we shared it at yesterday's faculty meeting as well, ultimately, we want our staff and our students to feel that, that pride and that belief in them. Next slide, please. We'll just keep the theme about school improvement planning today. That's kind of where I had it last year when we met, so we'll just continue living in that world. But during the past year, we have made a lot of, we've had some significant strides in many areas, we'll put it that way. I just would like to say that our achievements are ultimately a testament to the hard work and commitment of our dedicated staff. I also love this picture, and many of you come to the ballgames on Friday nights, but this is not an uncommon event, and this is not a, well, let's just say it's not a common culture. Alexander Central High School is unique, and so what I'm going to talk about here in this next session is not indicating that we are in a bad place, and I just wanted to have those previous quotes to kind of let you know we're always striving to be better, ultimately striving for perfection. Next slide, please. This is one of our goals from our school improvement plan. I'm not going to read the whole goal, but ultimately, we want our letter grade to be higher. Okay, it was already high. We were the second highest achieving school in the uniform area last year. So just to kind of set the tone, we are in a league of our own. Ultimately, we want to be better. Okay? I also want to say we lost some really good teachers last year to leadership opportunities and to retirement, and ultimately, I think one transferred to another county, and that hurt. They were all out of tested subject areas, and so we knew this year would be difficult, and we've embraced that. We felt like to master that and accomplish that goal, our objective would be to lean on that expertise that we talked about earlier. Our instructional teams need to meet regularly. We feel like twice a month for at least 45 minutes, and ultimately, we're in that time, we're going to review implementation of effective practices and track student progress. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to go over this, but I wanted to lay out for the board members to see the phases that we have, we have gone through this school year. Ultimately, I feel like there are a lot of proven benefits to an efficient professional learning community, also known as PLCs. As I stood here last year and presented to the board, I mentioned the following statistics and results from the 2021-22 North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey. Teachers have time available to collaborate with colleagues. Forty-five, excuse me, 47% of our staff disagreed or strongly disagreed. On average, each week collaborative planning time, 65% of teachers say less than an hour or none. On average, each week professional development time, 80% of teachers say less than an hour or none. Lastly, on average, each week utilizing results of assessments, 50% of teachers say less than an hour or none. We immediately set out to fix those areas. Reaching phase three by May. So I feel very proud of the work that we have done. It took time, and I wouldn't say that when I stood here last year, I had a clear plan for what that would look like. We had to get the pieces together. So it's really important to say this is a collaborative effort. We had to get the right people in the room. We had to get our teachers on board, and that takes time. But to be in phase three by May, I couldn't be more proud. So next slide, please. From 9:30 to 10:05 each day, every student is in a teacher-led session. As you can see here on that bottom row, PLCs, a different group of teachers are engaged in professional learning committee, meeting, or committee, community meetings each day. These teachers move forward and back, backward through four critical questions at their own pace, because let's be real, our teachers are not at the same level. They are dependent upon their own needs, and we try to support them as admin and with our coaching staff. But these are the four questions that we focus on in our weekly PLCs. What do we want students to know? How will we know when they know it? How will we respond when they don't know it? And how will we respond when they do know it? Much of this work defines what transpires in our teacher-led sessions and ultimately in the classroom. I also want to take note that if you look in the top left-hand box beside, oh, excuse me, under Monday, beside priority session, you will see that student services is allotted a time to pull kids in for priority sessions. I just want to say that this is an awesome opportunity for our counselors to meet individually with students and with students in small groups. All of this takes place outside of class time, so no student is being pulled from a corridor in the academic subject. So I just want to make note of that. It is also important to note that our PLCs are job embedded in this block, and teachers are never giving up any of their 90-minute planning period.
Mr. Lael, can I share a success story with you real quick? Today, I was out in my vehicle, and I saw a parent that has a business here in the community, and I saw that his son graduated Friday night. So I just pulled over for a second and spoke to him and congratulated him on Silas' accomplishment, and he looked at me and he said, "The staff at your high school, they are amazing." And he called one particular counselor's name, and he said, "If it had not been for that counselor, his son would have never graduated Friday night," that she had really stayed after him and met with him a couple of times every week to get him through.
Daily.
Okay, well, the son told him every, a couple times a week.
He's graduating now, it doesn't really matter.
But I couldn't have heard anything that made me more proud today, and so this evening, when we're finished, I'm going to type that counselor thank you note from that parent, but the parent told me straight up, if that support had not been there, his son would not have graduated Friday night.
Our counseling staff is top-notch, or are top-notch, and no student is allowed to fall through the cracks, and so when a student gets at the point that that young man is, we, we got to do everything possible, and she made it happen. So I'm glad to hear you say that.
Well, that father was very grateful.
I'm glad to hear that, and that young man is an exceptional young man.
Yes.
He just lost his way for a second.
Yes.
But he found it. That's what we're at, that's what we're about. Next slide, please. This next goal, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but just so you guys know, every year, Dr. Curry comes and we meet as a school improvement team, and we take something called the FAMSS assessment, and it's a tool that measures our school-level progress towards full implementation of multi-tiered systems of support, also known as MTSS. And the purpose of administering that and receiving the results and the data from that is to help our school and personnel identify and prioritize our next steps in our implementation. So if you will just kind of look at that goal, and then next slide, please, and it'll all make sense. This too, we have three phases. Phase three is where we are heading, but we're not quite there yet. We're in the process of identifying what feedback and data sources are most, are most important to support continuous improvement in the realm of the MTSS. But as you look at this, I also just want you to know this, this was a lot of work getting to this point today. Next slide, please. Here's just a quick infographic about our flex sessions. Several of you have high school-age students, so you're pretty familiar with what flex is by this point, but this is a flex graphic that was sent out to all the kids in January and February when we first started, and it's a great example of our tiered system for MTSS. Next slide, please. We are very proud of the fact that with this particular school improvement goal, we have accomplished it, and I will explain how. If you look at the FAMSS totals on the assessment results here for 2021-22, you will see that our overall FAMSS total was 55%. This year, you will see that our total is at 71.5%. Our school improvement goal was to grow from 55% to 65%, so we've well surpassed our overall goal. One specific area that we were tasked with addressing is building the capacity for MTSS at Alexander Central High School, and you will notice that that score jumped from 42% last year to 82% this year. So in one year, in one year, we had 40% growth. Next year, our emphasis will ultimately slightly, will slightly change as we look to identify other areas for improvement. Next slide, please. All right, our last goal that we're going to talk about here is next year, when our teacher working condition survey comes out, what's it going to look like, and what's it going to indicate in the realm of leadership and professional capacity of our teachers? Are they going to feel valued? Are they going to feel like they're involved? Are they going to feel like they've been around the table to help with decision-making? I sure hope so, so I would like to address that goal just real quickly. Next slide, please. This right here, this is a, well, it defines our pockets of leadership teams at Alexander Central. They all work independently, but they come together at multiple points and overlap to make sure we are all working towards the same goals. The structure of this, in my opinion, is why we have seen so much progress this school year, and we plan on keeping this structure around for next year. I'd say it's what's pushing us forward. Collaboration at the center of that. One particular item from this that I would like to expand upon, next slide, please, is our professional learning team. I think we're averaging around 20 people voluntarily, 7:30 in the morning, bi-weekly, in the media center over coffee, diving into flex, diving into PLCs, diving into instructional improvements that are not required to be there. I think it's a huge testament to the buy-in that we're seeing right now, and I have some results and some data to, to back that up. Next slide, please. Our school improvement team took a needs assessment recently, an under-distributed leadership and collaboration. You'll notice that we got a 95% rating, so we don't have a teacher working condition survey this year. So how do we know if we're on target for our goal, since it's a two-year goal? Ultimately, I'd say this is a pretty good inclination that we're getting. Next slide, please. I'm going to end with two slides, and these are just comparison data, and I just asked that you look at this, but I couldn't speak more highly for flex. I couldn't speak more highly for where we're heading. Just look at the number of students here that failed courses last year, or were failing courses last year on May 17th in comparison to the number of students that are failing classes as of May 18th this year. So lots, that's a lot fewer students. And I, we didn't want to pull the end, because ultimately, you know, we got to the end, but in the meat of it, in the thick of it, when it's crazy at the end of the year, and we're winding down, and kids are giving up, where did we stand? And I think it was a, a great data point to share this evening. I also attribute moving away from Smart Lunch as a, as a large portion of our success this year, and that's ultimately what flex is. Next slide, please, and this is the last slide I have. It's some more comparison data. I think this is really important to note that on June 1st of last year, we had 570 office referrals, office discipline referrals. On June 1st of this year, we only had 300 office referrals, 270, 270 decrease.
Great job.
That's awesome.
You contributed a lot of that to Smart Lunch. I think you kind of mentioned that one day to me. You do feel like a lot of that had to do with just the shift in that.
I feel like at this point, if we were to remove flex, what flex is intended to be, I think the parents and community would be upset with that. I feel like if we can truly reach our potential and fine-tune a few things, continue to get buy-in from staff members and students, I think what students like is they have ownership over it.
Yeah, but the discipline part is the part that, you know, I referenced in particular about flex, because I know you had referenced, and I talked there when we started Smart Lunch, and I remember how it was kind of, sometimes it was a little, a little more hands-on in lunchtime.
This is back to pre-COVID numbers. 280, 290, 300, that's where Alexander Central was for five or six years prior to COVID. And so there was a little spike the last two or three years, but we're coming back down, and we're very excited about that. But I do want to say one thing, and last year, when I presented to the board, I shared that in our teacher working condition survey that was just released at the time, 41% of teachers disagreed or strongly disagreed with the following statement, "Students at this school understand expectations for their conduct." We took that personal, and that is unacceptable.
Thank you.
I'd say we've been working tirelessly to clear up expectations for student behavior, and maybe most importantly, modeling really what we're looking for as a staff. So kind of full circle moment there with some comparison data. I do not have EOCs to stick in front of you at this point, and I don't know how our school report card will shake out in the grand scheme of things, but we're doing everything we can, and we're just high retention rate. Get to enjoy the summer of continuing to set the vision at the high school, and we're thankful for that.
Mr. Lael, to me, it sounds like you are truly worrying about what you can control.
Yes, sir.
Which is always one of my big mottos when I'm working with my staff, and you know, these discipline numbers, that, that's phenomenal. That's, that's one of the things that ranks high in my personal belief system. When I'm hearing from principals presenting those kind of things, I'm going to see what the discipline looks like, because when students are in our schools, we expect them to have the best discipline and the best behavior possible, and I appreciate this, Mr. Lael.
Absolutely. Happy to share that. I, two of them sitting right here, maybe they should take the stand, maybe not, maybe I'll be fired. You know, I think the ones who do the right thing every day are also thankful for that.
Yeah.
And are buying in, and their buy-in, and their efforts, and them now policing, controlling, that's all it takes.
And I'm hearing excellent things about you, and, and that, I appreciate, I appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions? That was all I had tonight. Sorry, I'm way over my time, I'm sure.
I'd just like to echo what Matt said about, I mean, you and your leadership, and I mean, I see you in soccer matches. It's one thing, you know, football in this county is big, but to see you at soccer matches, to see you at track meets, things like that, to my son, you know, and, and just your involvement, and then, you know, I think graduation spoke a lot of volumes for the respect these kids have for you.
Yes, sir.
And how they interact with you, and you interact with them. I'm just extremely appreciative of your leadership and what you're doing there, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you. It was very sad seeing this class go. They, they were so good. I like we've got a great junior class.
I have, I have questions. So this, this is your second year, is that correct, at AC?
No, sir.
He just finished up his first year.
First year. Okay, so how do you address adversity? I mean, I see the word leadership continuously in your presentation, and I see it from your voice.
Yeah.
So when you, when you come out to a teacher that doesn't agree, how do you handle that?
So can I give you an example?
Sure, please.
Expand upon it. I didn't feel like Smart Lunch was working. We had a number of people that felt like Smart Lunch was not working, but it's what we've done. It's what we're used to. So when we start looking outside the box of what else is there, who's doing it the right way, you start calling other counties and talk to other principals, and you know, you start hearing there's other things out there. Well, at that point, can you go to that school? Yeah, let's go watch it in action. We picked a high school that's about an hour from here, and they're rocking it. Scores are great, culture's strong, and I wanted to go see it in action. We took a day, paid for subs. Who do we take? Let's take some folks who may not just be yes people. And we, we definitely had that group, we also had another group that probably told us things we didn't want to hear.
Yeah.
And at the end of our visit at the high school, we rented a room at a local college, and we, we talked for about an hour. And at the end of our visit at the high school, we rented a room at a local college, and we, we talked for about an hour over lunch. And it was some of the best discussion I think we've ever had in, like, man, we can do this. And I think people, we just get used to things a certain way.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's just really important to listen to everyone. And most importantly, include them. And you're gonna have to navigate that sometimes, because you may get a comment that's completely out of bounds. But most times, if they're involved in it, it's gonna work out. And that's really, I think, probably where we've seen our most success this year. And it's also one of our goals, right? I mean, it's capacity building, like, what is the true role of a department chair? What is the true role of a school improvement team member? And how does that, and what's a PLT, right? We, I think also just defining it a little bit more clearly. I can't wait for next year. Because I feel like it's just gonna come to fruition even more so. But we have a very young staff. We hired a lot of people just because it was just that time and season in many of the prior employees' lives that they were gonna step away from it. And so we gotta build our people up. But I know one thing for sure, there's enough expertise in that building to make it happen and keep us on top. We just gotta pull them out, you know? But I hope that answers your question.
No, it definitely did. And then are you sharing this with, with the weekly or monthly principals meeting that you're having? I mean, is this?
We, we've talked a little bit about it. I know in the fall, we, Dr. Curry took a couple of us down to Raleigh. We had attended the AIM conference, and we talked a lot about that. Just about leadership and getting the right people in the room.
Because I just hear a lot of standardization in, in what you're saying tonight, just being honest, and I love it. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
One common observation, your leadership has been exemplary, but especially with the results that you've achieved in such a short time. What I know out of what you presented is the need for our human resource development amongst our teacher population, our professionals in the high school and throughout the school system and such. And I think that it'd be quite interesting next time that we get together and you have another update to talk about, how are you building up the overall skill set? Where are the big holes that we have, and how can we as a board help you in your hiring, your staffing, your training activities to fill those gaps so that we can even further accelerate the improvement that you've been bringing to the table?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to have that conversation. There's a lot of data points that we're collecting right now, and it's, it's very neat, too, and I just wanna, I guess, I'd be remiss if I didn't make this shout out here, but I attribute a lot of it to adding instructional coaches at the high school. I think the minute that happened, it gave us the fuel for what we needed to get.
Okay.
People, you know, we hired from within seasoned employees at the high school that knew the culture. And that was the ticket. And at that point, we can take that expertise, we can take their, their flexibility, and we can sit down with all these teachers and, and just, because we had so many new ones. Like, I'm gonna come in and watch your lesson, then I'm gonna model. You know, we have an instructional coach teaching two weeks worth of lessons for a science teacher. It's important to invest in that teacher right out the gate instead of teach, let me see your, you know, ineffectiveness, rate you on it. No. A teacher's gonna observe you a couple, that instructional coach is gonna observe you a couple times, and then gonna model, here's what we're looking for, and then gonna come right back in.
Can I just, as a superintendent, I can tell you all something that you can do for every principal on the system? Trust. Trust them and let them do their jobs. We have a process, a team process for every hire in this system. Trust the process. Then get the people into the positions and trust that they will be trained to do it the AC way. And when they don't, trust them to address it. So we're gonna be talking about the speed of trust at the end of the month. That's the biggest thing that you all could do for us. Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Lael.
Thanks, sir.
As a parent, as a board member, uh, thank you for what you do. I know you put a lot of hours in. I hope you'll take time this summer, enjoy that new baby something.
Great job.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Amy Johnson for our Student Success Center update.
Good evening, Chairman Robertson, Vice Chair Aquius, Dr. Hefner, and the rest of the board members. So I'm gonna go a little bit of a different route with you guys tonight than, uh, Mr. Lael. You're gonna see a lot of pictures tonight, and that is because sometimes I don't know that the students at the Student Success Center always feel sane. They don't like to be seen a lot, to be quite honest. So I'm showing them off tonight because they are awesome, and I am super proud of the year that we have there. When I first started SSC, probably the first day I walked into my office and sat down, I was reading through something, and I found this quote. Rise up, start fresh, see the bright opportunity in each day. And that right there was kind of our motto for the year. My belief is that if we change the mindset of the students that are the Student Success Center, they can be successful. Whether that's while they're in our building or if they move on to their home school. So that was really our whole motto for the entire year, is to change that mindset and start fresh every single day. So, thank you. So I would be remiss to not recognize these wonderful people. This is my staff. These people right here are the reason that we were able to do what we were able to do this year. I have one middle school teacher, two high school teachers, one exceptional children's teacher, two teacher assistants, a part-time counselor, a part-time social worker, and a secretary who does, I don't know, bookkeeping, you know, she does it all. They came in not knowing anything about me, who I was, and they just went with me. They might have thought I was crazy at the beginning when I started throwing out ideas, but they went with it, and without them, we couldn't have had the year we had. Just a little bit about some of these people, because I don't know, people always know how Student Success Center works, but our students are on an online program called EdMentum. And so our middle school teacher, our one middle school teacher, she, this year, she basically taught twelve courses through EdMentum with our kids. So she teaches sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, ELA, math, science, and social studies. And then our two high school teachers, between them, taught thirty-three plus courses through EdMentum. So working a lot of one-on-one and in small groups with our kids, because we have so many students taking so many different courses in so many different grade levels. So it takes a lot of work and coordination to make it work and get these kids where they need to be. Our student services, our counselor and social worker, because they're only there part-time, we have to be very creative with when they're there, because it is very, very important that we have someone in our building every day for a crisis. I remember there was one day that they were both out at their other schools for something, and I was in a panic because I had a kid in a crisis. And I'm like, Colin, I need you here. So that is a challenge for us that we're continuing to work on, because our kids need a lot of support. Next slide. So our kids, our students. Beginning in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had twelve middle school students and seventeen high school students, which really does not sound like a lot. However, um, though our building is not built for that many children. We, our middle school is built for about six kids and, for middle school. So to have double that was a struggle at the beginning. Our high school, seventeen, is doable. It would, it's easier if it's a little less, but totally doable with our two high school teachers. We served a total of thirty-five students this year. Many stayed, but we had some that went in and out, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Our students get to us because they have either violated school board policy. They may have come from hospitalization stay or detention center. They just may need a smaller group setting to acclimate if they're new to our county, coming from maybe a group home of some sort. There's many reasons that they get there, but students aren't just thrown into the Student Success Center. There's quite a process to get them there, and I am super grateful for the partnership I have with the two middle schools and the high school to make sure that we're placing the right kids there. Without our teamwork, we would not be able to do what we do and make sure the right students are placed and successful. So this year, six students successfully transitioned back to their home school. That means that we sent six students back to the middle school and the high school, and they stayed. And we are super excited about that. It is hard for these kids to do that. It is, it sounds like it would be easy, but it is not. Some of these kids have been with us for a long time or were in a behavior classroom in elementary school and had never, had not really been in a very standard classroom, and are now being very successful at the middle school. So that is a huge success for us. We had six high school graduates, and I am gonna show them off at the end of this. I cannot tell you how proud I am of these six students. Our suspensions are down. We have more students that are learning how to reset and return to the classroom, and that is because of my staff and how they talk to kids and work with kids. They set expectations. They build relationships with our students. They get to know them on a different level, and they're consistent. Like, they know what we expect, and we do what we say, and so they understand that. I think in the first semester, we averaged about, on average, our suspensions were about five days. You know, based on severity of students, second semester, we were down to about three, three and a half days. So the types of behaviors that are happening in our building have also gone down, because they have built relationships with us. They've trusted us for having blowups, walking out the front door, that kind of stuff. So, very, very successful. So let me show you what we did to change their mindset this year. So we talk about being enrolled, enlisted, or employed. We push that with our kids this year. Just because they're at the Student Success Center does not mean that they can't go to college. They can't join the military. They can't get a job. They can do all of those things. We just have to show them. So we spent a lot of time doing that. We are very grateful the high school allowed us to send a student over to ROTC. So he walked over to ROTC every day and loved it, and is gonna be going back there next year and wants to join the military. We took students, we took high school students to Mitchell Community College, Catawba Valley Community College, and Wolf's Community College, and showed them programs about agriculture, computer science, welding, construction, automotive, you name it. They got to experience it, and there's a lot of pictures there of them doing some of the things. And we had kids who never talk, talking, laughing, talking about what they learned. They would come back and tell me everything that they learned, and they were so excited. And just to see that was so fun. Our middle schoolers and our high schoolers got to visit local businesses and learn about job opportunities within the community. We also helped students fill out job applications. We had two students that we specifically worked with to get jobs and are working in our community right now. So we want our students to know that they can absolutely do what they want to do. Being at SSC is not the end all. It's not where they're gonna end their, their career. They're moving on. So, next slide. Some things that we did to try to change the mindset with our student engagement is it's so hard to be on EdMentum on the computer all day long. And so we try to do different activities with our students. We do Mindset Mondays, so we talk about just how, what's our mindset look like for the week? Where are we coming in today? We spend a lot of time focusing on that first thing Monday morning. What would you do Wednesday is my favorite, because they will watch scenarios and they will, there was a show on like CBS or something at one point where, like, people would like pretend to do things out in the community and see how people reacted. And so our kids would watch those, and then they would discuss, what would you have done if you'd have been in that situation? And it's surprising some of the things that they would say. Knowing some of the things that these kids have done and experienced, they were able to say, that's not right. That's not okay, and what they would do to help a person. So as simple as that sounds, it's super important for our kids to be able to understand that they have to know how to treat people. Thinking outside the box Thursday was something as simple as giving them something and turning it into something else. They loved that one, especially our middle schoolers. They wrote letters to the elderly. One of my hardest students, who I loved very much, but was, it was a struggle for her at school every day. She wrote letters to elderly, and they were the sweetest letters ever, and she loved doing that. So we tried to do that quite often with her. We had guest speakers come in. We had someone come in. He was a longtime felon who had lost his license, had been through a lot of things that our children and our students have been through or their families have been through, and came in and was able to talk about his story and how he had turned it around and, you know, what, what they needed to do to do the same, and our kids loved it. And they got to do a push-up challenge at the end with him, and if they could do more push-ups than him in a minute, he gave them candy. And you would have thought that was like the best. They took CTE courses at the high school. Thank you, Crystal Hope and Ryan Lewis for that. We were able to really hook our kids up with some courses that they did not even know they were interested in, and now they are going back there to take more. The next slide, please. Changing the mindset, another thing that we do to engage our kids is we have a point system. That's how they earn rewards, and this is just a fun day that I had to show you a few weeks ago. We tied-ied, we made a huge mess in my office, and we got brand-new SSC shirts, and all the kids got to tie-die their shirt the way they wanted, and we celebrated with Abby Sugar Shack, just for a really good year. All of our students took their points, and they took, they wanted to save them up and use them for this particular event, which was a lot of fun. Because a lot of them, they want to spend their points as soon as they get them. But they're learning that accumulating points and spending it on something more important that's gonna give them a core memory is actually more important. That was fun that day. You can see their smiles. Another thing we did was create some partnerships this year. We created a partnership with the Bridge Community. They were amazing. They brought our kids gifts on Valentine's Day, and our staff. They set us up with an art teacher that came in and did artwork with him about every two weeks for a couple months. And then we had our art show at the end of May, and it was a huge success. It was so nice to see the community come out and see our kids' art and let them express how they wanted to express. They got to choose whatever they wanted to do. Kids who said I would never touch a paintbrush were painting by the end of the time with the art teacher. It was really neat. They also provided us with some tutors to come in and work with our kids one-on-one, and particularly math, where they struggled. And they built some really good relationships there. We also had partnerships with Pinnacle for counseling for all of our students who do not have an outside counselor. So they were working one-on-one with our kids. And then I would be praising not to thank the Department of Juvenile Justice, because without their partnership, some of our kids would be in a lot more trouble. But because we have such a strong relationship with support counselors, we're able to communicate and keep these kids on the right track. So we appreciate them. And here's my, my kiddos that I told you I was gonna praise on. These are my graduates. And if y'all knew the stories of these students right here, you would be shocked.
If they read the newspaper, they read about one of them.
Yep. They, these students are wonderful. Three of them did walk across the stage. Last week, we had two that were unable to walk across the stage. They already had prior commitments. Some of these actually were early graduates. They graduated in December. And then we had one that graduated from a separate facility, but still graduated with the help of us, a partnership that we had with DJJ. So I would be crazy not to celebrate these kiddos.
Great job.
That is awesome.
Great job.
Yeah, that was awesome. And they were so nervous, but it was really fun. We had our own little small celebration, but then they got to celebrate at the high school, too. And then lastly, just next year, just so you kind of know where we're headed, our staff has decided that our theme for next year is to be resilient. We really want to teach our students what resilience is, what it looks like, and how they can be resilient. We already have a shirt ready for next year about being resilient, and we're excited about pushing that out to our students and our families, too, because we work really closely with our families. We want to continue growing our partnerships with the Bridge Community and other outside agencies, going and doing some volunteer work in the community with our kids and finding more career opportunities for them, and then just offering them more experiences. You'd be surprised how many of our students have never been outside of our county. And so just providing them with some experiences, and I think that's where people think I was crazy coming in. I'm like, we're taking them places, and they're like, we're taking them places. So, thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Johnson, I would just like to say, I wish everybody in our county could walk through your, your school building. Because it is amazing. There are so many success stories there. And, and people, we heard the naysayers when we built the building and, and started that program, but it is unbelievable. So thank you for what you do.
You're welcome. I love it. I, it's probably one of the best jobs I've ever had, to see these students grow and achieve, and then sending them back to their other school staff.
It's good to see your connections with the high school utilizing the career tech.
Yes.
Your community partners. You know, having taught at the high school, that was one area I felt like CTE missed out on. Your community partners, um, you know, having taught at the high school, that was one area I felt like CTE missed out on. That they didn't get, a lot of times they didn't get the opportunity to serve with the SSC students. And those are, those are good opportunities for some of those students and I'm glad to see you're using those.
Thank you. I mean, the kids, we had students who said they would never walk over to the high school because they had some that started with us and had never been there and didn't have a connection to the high school. One actually that just graduated, he said, I will never go over there. And he took a CTE course this semester and last semester and loved it. And now is going to go into the construction business because of it. So, um, it's just pushing them a little bit. They might not want to go at first, but once they get over there, they have, they love it and it's so great. And I appreciate it for that program being willing to work with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Mary Brown, our principal at Alexander Early College for our Alexander Early College update.
Hey, Jacob and Amy are hard acts to follow, you guys have done a great job. So, but we'll try. So, okay, so we can talk about this school year at Alexander Early College. Please advance the slide. So instructional excellence in alignment, all 2023 graduates earned an associate degree. And that does not happen every year. And last year, my goal was to get them all to graduate. We got everybody graduated, not with an associate's degree, but most of them had it. But this year, everybody had an associate degree. Half of all graduates earned two degrees in associative arts and associative science. That is amazing. And all graduates earned their high school diplomas. So I'm super proud of our students and our graduates this year.
That slide alone preserves the round.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank, it's really to the teachers and our relationship with CBCC. So we have a thing called the matriculation review board and those, that's for students, ninety-nine point percent of the time. It's, they're struggling academically, once in a while it's a behavior issue. But in spring twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-one students on academic probation or failed a class and this year we had. So we're working to minimize that. It's a lot of support, it's a lot of checking in, it's a lot of me saying, pull up your blackboard and let me see how you're doing English or chemistry or whatever. And just really, it's working, we still have work to do, it's working. Go ahead. And we've had a problem with students going to AEC and transferring to the high school and then that's hard on the high school, it's hard on us. So if you look at that table, um,
Define Mary what that means when you say it's hard on the high school and it's hard on us.
Well, we,
Because it's a core situation.
It's a core situation. If they start with us, they might be defined at the high school, so then they have to try to work them into their situation. They're out of, they're out of, um, the schedule that they're supposed to be on, they've got to find places for them, nobody's expecting it. And so one of the things when I started, um, this is the end of my second year was going to transfer everybody that doesn't do well back to the high school. And that was the perception of the students weren't doing well academically, send them on, them back, oh, you can't make it here. I have really made it my personal mission to keep as many kids as I possibly can at AEC. I can help, I can do, not I, but we can do it for most of our students. We run into some issues with CBC and have, having to have a certain grade point average, but for the most part, we do everything we can. So we've really decreased that number of transfers and we're really working on it. One thing we did this year was the freshmen started with PE as their college class first semester, then they had health their second semester. And by the time they got into the academics, they would be, had failed four courses and have to go back either as a senior or junior. Who wants to go back as a senior? Look like it, what they weren't successful at, what they were doing. So this year, we put them in art and music, which are more academic. And we were like, uh, I see who was for the MRB and it really, we didn't have a thought. We really, we really, um, it really worked out really well. And that way, if a child does have to choose academia, it's not the right fit, as that, it's not, it's not what they can, where, where they, where, what might be a better fit earlier in high school. So, but that being said, I know a lot about blackboard and art at CBC and music at CBC. Anyway, but we feel like that's been a positive thing, so now the students know what rigor is early than they did previously. Okay. Okay, we've also had a couple of non-traditional entries to AEC. We had two kids from ACHS, two sophomores, one is doing phenomenally well. We were kind of like, eh, are they going to be able to make it? But both had asked us if they could come and we're going to try to give who wants to be there, who can possibly do a chance. We've had one from a homeschool doing extremely well, one from a private school is doing well. And then, um, we have several coming from out of state this year, which is interesting, one from Alaska and one from Kentucky. I don't know how they found us, but they're there. So there we go, so we're excited about that. Um, this year, we've developed, one of the things we heard when we had our listening sessions with parents and students was they wanted more opportunities for professional experience, knowledge. And so we, we now have some pathways and concentrations of teaching, CNA, engineering, computer science. Um, these are going to be implemented over the next couple of years, so we're working, we're working through that. And that, um, that's Galilea Reyes, phenomenal, she's going to be, she got the teaching, got the teaching. Go ahead. Emotional wellness, we have really, really good students, but they still struggle. They're, they're, they're bright, but a lot of them are, you know, they're average and they just work really, really hard and they all have stuff going on. You'd be amazed how many students are taking five classes and working five hours. It's unbelievable. And one of the, we have a flexible schedule and they can leave campus, so a lot of them do take on a lot. And we have counselor support, five oh fours is working on a core plan and different things like that. But we, um, instituted a buddy program where we paired a freshman with an upperclassman to kind of help them get to know the school and do a fantastic Friday, which one of the clubs takes over and they have some type of activity and some type of food, um, on a Friday afternoon. And they have to spend some time together. I'll give them a bingo card or make up something, go find somebody who is the oldest in their family, go find somebody who has chemistry third period or something like that so that they get to know each other. So we had excellent academic growth, we exceeded growth in twenty twenty-two, AECs, woo. And, and I hope it sticks, our math three EOCs look phenomenal this year. Melissa Sharp is amazing, but she has got, I think I told Dr. Cr, I don't know, like ten fives or twelve five, I mean, it's fifteen fives. She's amazing. Um, and then last, in the ACT, we exceeded her math growth in all areas. And this, we, our students are smart, but it is that staff that really pulls it out of them, really can lead them further than they go. We worked on, um, family and community engagement. So one of the things when I started was our relationship with CBC was okay, but we could use some improvement and they are fabulous. We love CBC, they're amazing. We've got parent involvement, we have a PTO, they feed us a lot. We have volunteers, just a lot of different things. We've developed relationships with East and West. We wanted to make sure the middle schools knew what we had to offer, so we've had the counselors come over for breakfast. We've made presentations to, at their faculty meetings. We've been over to visit, the students have had lunch, have hung out during lunches. So we're really working on those relationships. We've had other community relationships, we've had state representative, a judge, financial advisors, physician's assistant, different people coming in to kind of hit that, what are the careers out there? Um, the other, um, early colleges, we've done study visits at two, we had an early college cup and we played volleyball and basketball and our boys won the basketball and we were way more competitive than you would expect. Some of us had to be a little quiet and we were still, uh, active. We've done college visits and field trips. We do a lot of habitat volunteering through Interact and, um, that is, that's just phenomenal. Sometimes we've got a lot, a lot of students out there.
Mary, I know that I came out and saw your group one Saturday. Are you all working on a habitat house every Saturday or how?
It's once a month.
Once a month, okay. I was very impressed by the number that you had out there the day that, that I visited, so.
They, they do a good job in that because it does its job. He's still, I still haven't figured out how to hang drywall.
Oh, listen, the day that I was there, all of you, all of you had a lot of paint on you and there was a lot of paint on the inside of the house.
Last time I went, you said, why don't you go clean the kitchen? Our next slide. These are just some pictures, that's a trip to Chapel Hill, that's a habitat house, the prom. That was, uh, we went to, uh, medical lab in Wake Forest and then we went to, at Wake Forest in Winston, we went to the zoo. That's the early college cup. We had Judge Graham came and oversaw a mock trial, we went to a proddads game. And then that last slide was the first of many hours at the Salisbury station. And I want to talk a little bit about our teachers. We're, we're reading the book Courage to Teach, it is wonderful, it is very dense. Um, and we've talked about our faculty meetings, about seventy-five percent of our faculty meetings are devoted to kind of working through that book. I cannot get those teachers out of there by five, I'm looking at, watching, y'all, we have got to, we have things to do, I have things to do, you have things to do. It's a really deep book. Um, again, we did observations at other schools and more, most importantly, and I think the other two principals alluded to this, the entire AEC staff leaves them, that I think is what makes the difference. So we just have a lot to celebrate. Again, academic growth, fantastic Fridays, our community support, all seniors. Oh, we had some scholarships, we asked for some scholarship money, I think I ended up, I got like $1,000 in about two weeks for teaching scholarships and a CNA scholarship. It was, I would open the mail and there'd be a check for $4,000, it was phenomenal. Um, our senior graduate we talked about, we had professional speakers and more than $2,784,000 in scholarships and grants were offered. We have Finn's Den Pavilion, which I'm hoping is going to get electricity soon, but we do have concrete on it now. But the senior class named it for Mr. Quinn Cannon. We've done, um, college visits, early college cup and field trips. Go ahead. Next year, we are starting Owl Parliament. Uh, if you didn't know this, a group of owls is called a parliament. We're going to have four parliaments, each student will be a member of the same parliament every year there at AEC. We'll compete through attend, there'll be competitions through attendance, grades, community service for awards and recognition.
Wonderful.
Parliament members will support and help each other and again, we're trying to build community and a sense of belonging, confidence. And they're going to meet weekly to discuss topics facilitated by two staff members. So I've got that pretty much organized, we're pretty excited about that. Thank you for the opportunity to share about the successes at A, who, who's.
At this time, I would like to recognize Vice Chairman, uh, Agüez for our budget committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, the current state of our economy with inflationary pressures have hit us all. Alexander County schools are not immune to the current state of affairs and we too foresee significant challenges in the two years ahead of us. The mission for Alexander County schools is and always will be to focus on assuring the best possible education for our children. Hence our motto, children first. However unpopular, this task does require funding and last year's total budget for our school system was in the order of sixty-four and a half million dollars. Earlier this year, the Board of Education foresaw significant reductions in state and federal funding and adjusted our request to the Alexander County Commissioners for assistance in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget years. We understand and agree with our commissioners that we must be strong stewards of our community's tax, tax dollars. And we accept the challenge that was given to us by our commissioners to formulate an operational plan allowing us to function as a school system with twenty-three, twenty-four level funds through twenty-four and twenty-five. After careful review and evaluation of the immediate impact of one capitalizing on all available S R funds that are forthcoming next year, as well as the closing of the virtual academy, the budget committee believes that we will be able to tread water and operate through twenty-three, twenty-four without foreseeable major disruptions and equality of education being delivered to our children. However, the situation in twenty-four, twenty-five will be significantly more challenging and the net impact will be driven primarily by one S R funding elimination altogether. Alexander County enrollment reductions in our general population. The North Carolina State Department Education funding cuts, the school voucher transfer mandates that are forthcoming and inflationary pressures on operating costs as well as the increases in labor market costs. All of these will hit us with an estimated shortfall of approximately $3 million. Although we believe we will be in an acceptable operational mode during the course of twenty-three, twenty-four, we must take the challenge of twenty-four, twenty-five seriously and act accordingly and quickly. And it's because of this very real $3 million US, US dollar shortfall that we will face in twenty-four, twenty-five that the budget committee proposes to the Board of Education that cost offsets be considered to help us tackle this challenge. The following are the possible work streams that we believe will deliver the savings required to allow Alexander County schools to be sustainable without adding a burden on our taxpayer community. The following are the most impactful work stream ideas under consideration, however, the challenge is quite large and we may need even more if these do not yield the $3 million that are necessary. The first work stream is the consolidation of job functions across our schools. For example, how can we operate schools with shared resource approach instead of dedicated personnel in each and every one of the schools? And roles such as data managers, bookkeepers, counselors, social workers, media coordinators, PE teachers, music teachers, administrators, instructional coaches and any others that might be as additional support personnel that are dedicated to school. The second work stream is restructure the central office staff via job eliminations and work redistribution initiatives. The third work stream is the identification of an alternative work or school schedule and for example, going to a four-day week as opposed to a five-day week and seeing the net savings that would come from that. Now, of course, we have to abide by the statutory requirements of a thousand and twenty-five hours, um, per year. So that would mean longer days for those four days if we were to go into such a moment.
And that four-day week would be for students only, staff still would have to work two hundred fifteen days a year.
Thank you for the clarification. Number four would be to identify opportunities to replace or terminate AP level courses while capitalizing on our relationship with CBCC. Number five is to identify opportunities for potential school closures and/or consolidations. And then lastly, potentially eliminate athletic programs and related staff personnel that are not generating revenue. The budget committee as well as the Board of Education believes that it is our duty to be transparent in all matters related to the current budgetary challenge. Additionally, we believe that the first six preliminary work streams shared will not be easy and will require a great deal of work and commitment. The timeline that we expect for communicating progress on each of these work streams to y'all and to the rest of our community is as follows. In July of twenty-three, the superintendent is to identify and share the names of each leader for each work group to the Board of Education. In August, we expect that the Board will be tasked with approving the list of group leaders tied to each one of the work streams. In September of this year, the Board will be prepared and will present and is expected to approve the savings target for each one of the work leaders, for each one of the work teams. In other words, how much of the $3 million could be generated by each one of the six that we identified? And we might even have a seven and eight at that point as well and we'll communicate. And then number two, each of the work group leaders will provide to the Board a bit, a list of all team members including volunteers from our parent advisory councils, teachers and interested parents who wish to participate and be part of each one of those work stream teams. From November of this year through February twenty-four, the Board, we present to the Board for consideration that the work group leaders and teams will meet and develop plans and action items against the twenty-four, twenty-five challenge in line with a $3 million goal. November of this year through February twenty-four, the superintendent will provide the Board of Education a progress report of all work teams to the Board of Education at our meeting scheduled in that time period. As of March of next year in twenty-four, a final report will be given to the Board of Education for review and approval of the net results of all of our work stream teams. And in April of twenty-four, a final plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year showing the inclusion of the $3 million task will be presented to the Board of Education by the superintendent illustrating each of the team's action plans and from that point, executions will move forward accordingly. We wish to strongly state that it is our intent to invite our community to join us in the previously mentioned work teams as we wish to make sure that parents are part of the decision-making process in anything affecting our children. We will welcome volunteers to each work group from our parent advisory councils as well as from all others who have children in our school system and have an interest to participate and we welcome you with open arms. Please, please make sure to voice your wish to be part of the process and participate in a work group before the September twenty-three report.
Thank you, Mr. Agüez.
That's my update.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. As part of the budget committee, we met, um, we do have a major problem coming up, not this year, but next. We will be meeting again, our work groups will be in, um, groups will be in, board members, I would like all of us to serve on work groups. We don't know how many. We don't know exactly the line. You see the number of, we started out with six possible work groups. There could be more. So I would like each one of us to serve on a work group.
Okay.
And be part of that. Dr. Hefner will work with principals and to manage what groups the principals will be on and their staff, because we won't, we won't staff from our schools involved in this, and also parent involvement. So if you have parents contacting you, or if you have parents that you would like to serve on these committees, please contact them. Because I can see these work groups being, I don't know, ten, twelve, fifteen people per group. I don't know. We don't know. I would ask that the Budget Committee and Dr. Hefner meet prior to the July Fourth holiday, so within the next couple of weeks, if we could sit down and pretty much have our work groups wind up best we can.
I have a principal's meeting scheduled for Thursday, and this is one of the topics that we will be discussing on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you. I hate having to talk about this, but with, with all the cuts we're receiving, we have no choice.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Argüés, for sharing that, and I do encourage folks that may be interested and volunteer to serve within our schools, parents, as he stated, to please reach out to individuals to get your name on these lists.
One thing I got to say, Chairman Robinson, and I don't want it to be, I'm not coming across mean about this at all, but Commissioners made it pretty clear in their meeting, or some of them did, one time that this system was broke, which I took that pretty offensive. But we're not broke. We're not broke in any way. The state tells us what we can spend and what we're going to get. The county gives us money, and we're going to have to work with them, and we've got to have their support. But as taxpayers, we need to voice to our Commissioners also that our voice matters too, and education needs to be at the top of their list.
We kept fourteen percent of their budget.
And I just, I just feel like they, it didn't seem like they minded to say that we had a problem. And I'm not saying it's their problem, but they're part of, they're part of us too. And our taxpayers and our citizens need to let them know that, you know, we're all in this together. And, you know, we can't help it. We don't, we're not a bank. We can't raise a dime. We can't borrow a dime. Without them, we can't do nothing. So I want us to, I want us to all get on the same page, if that's possible. And I think citizens need to let them know that's what they want, too.
And Mr. Roman, you and I were on this board when we talked about school closures.
Absolutely.
And I really don't want to talk about it again, but it looks like it may be a possibility. But we heard very loud and clear back then that no community wants their school closed. And understandably, we don't want to close a school. The schools are the center of the little communities that we have in our county.
Well, and if I can interject, you know, the thing of it is, we are all tax-paying citizens here. And it doesn't matter what entity, what organization you are a part of, there's cuts. There's cuts. But the thing that I, the thing that resounded with me as Vice Chairman Argüés was presenting this, is giving the public the opportunity to have input, to offer transparency, communication, and those kinds of things. And, you know, we do have to work together. We do not want to close schools. That is something that we do not want to see happen. But we've got to work together on this. And I think with what has been presented by Vice Chairman Argüés and the Budget Committee is the best vehicle in which to do that.
If I could add, for the work sessions, I'd like to work with the Commissioners, maybe to be on a couple of those as well. We need to work together as a team and as a group. Thank you for the input. And there'll be updates. As you stated, there's going to be a lot of updates forthcoming over the next year. And that transparency is the key to that, to keeping everybody aware of what's on the table. These are just all items. I mean, it's like, like I said, none of us want to close a school. But all these are other steps that can be reviewed to look at all the areas and the cost savings per area.
I think as the teams start materializing and they start putting pencil and paper on the action plans and starting to compile what the dollar contribution leads one of these teams, it'll become clear to us which path we need to take, where we need to put our priorities, where we need to focus our resources. I think the data will drive us, but I think just as importantly, we will be able to communicate to our, all the stakeholders in our community exactly where we are, and what the magnitude of the challenge is, and how heavy is the lifting that's ahead of us. I think we know that we have a $3 million problem. That's a macro problem. Which work stream absorbs how much of that? We don't know. But we know where we need to start peeling that onion to get to that answer. And more is better in communication.
Yep, yep, yep. Any other comments on the Budget Committee update? All right. Do we have any other? Next item is committee reports. We put that one separate because of the magnitude of it, just so everybody realizes that that, that's, that's our biggest task we've got probably facing us right now. So as far as other committee reports, do we have any other committee reports at this time? All right. It's been a very busy month. There's not really been any time for committee meetings with all the school events with the end of the year going on. I would like to recognize this time is Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer, for our transportation funding update.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been concerned since the transportation report was given, that there may have been some misunderstanding about the transportation budget and how the transportation allotment is given.
Excellent.
First of all, the allotment calculation, the Department of Public Instruction calculates the transportation allotment using a funding base and a transportation budget rating. So then the question is, what is the funding base and what is the transportation rating? The funding base is multiplying the previous year's funding base by the budget rating to determine the current year's allotment. Okay, then, the, the funding base is the actual eligible expenditures from the prior year for the to and from school transportation. One of the things that is not an eligible expenditure, although it's a good expenditure and a needed expenditure, is equipment. So no matter how much money we spend in equipment, it is never put in the funding base. And what is the budget rating? The budget rating is a measure of efficiency and is calculated by examining the cost of, of the cost per student and the number of buses for 100 students. So I have learned a lot from our interim Transportation Director Kevin Britton, and he tells me, your fun, your budget rating is determined by the number of students, the amount of money, and the number of buses. So those are the three things that control your budget rating.
Ms. Mahaffey, when you say amount of money, what does that actually, amount of money of?
Well, I think it refers back to where you're, you're per pupil. So you take your transportation cost and then divide it by the number of pupils that rode, and that gives you the.
Thank you.
And there is a particular date that they take that number of students, that they measure that number of students. So how does our budget rating compare with the systems that, that the study compared us to? Our budget rating for this time period was eighty-five point three one. There were, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, eleven systems that were compared to us, and we fall in the upper half, about in the middle. The highest was a hundred, and the lowest was seventy point three eight. And the state average budget rating is eighty-one point nine nine. So at, in, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we were a little above the state average. But remember, that's when we redid our, restructured every transportation and eliminated several buses. So that should increase our budget rating. Okay, so if we take all this theory that we've talked about and all these rules we've talked about, and look at them in numbers, in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had, our state funds were one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. We contributed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ten dollars in local funds, for a total of one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Okay.
Now, that state number does not match. What you read does not match what we're seeing. Did I just mishear it?
Okay, the state number at the top.
Did I just hear that?
Nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, the state amount was nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I thought maybe you had a revision that we didn't have, is what scared me.
No, and the local amount was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ten dollars.
Okay.
And the total is one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, state and local expenditures. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries.
Okay, the budget rating was eighty-five point three one percent. So remember, you take your eligible expenditures. Ours was one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. You multiply times the budget rating, and so then the next year, our state allotment was one million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. So we, we contributed two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ten dollars in local money, and then the next year, we received seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two additional state dollars. I think that the presentation made it sound like that we weren't putting enough local money in to keep boosting the state dollars. If you indeed need to put those local dollars in, then yes, but you're not leaving money on the table if you don't do it. Now, as Kevin says, one of the ways to leave money on the table is to not try to improve your budget rate. So if we took the, the same, okay, I need the next, okay. If you took the same scenario, the same money, and you went from the eighty-five point three one percent to ninety percent, you would receive an additional state allotment of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Now, Kevin has, he, he should, there is something they have called a simulator. So he can put in and simulate what he, what our budget rating may be for the next year. He thinks it may be somewhere between ninety-four percent and ninety-five point seven six percent.
Wow.
If you'll remember from the presentation.
Sure.
We have been, we have been held, held, well, they call it held harmless. I think for us, it was held and harmed. At this ninety-five point three one percent, when we could have been at ninety-five point seven six or ninety-four percent. If that had happened, we would have, instead of the, the seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, we would have received two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, or an additional one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So I guess that what I would like to accomplish with the presentation is to say we were kind of a victim of circumstances, and that we are working to increase our efficiency, so we increase our state funding. And then I just, my last slide is to remind us that budget rating, which we can increase the dollars we get, is based on the number of students riding, the amount of money, and the number of buses. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the information.
One question, and the update from the, when we had the audit, what was stated, my recollection, selection, please, fellow board members, correct me if I'm losing my mind, was that because of non-reporting compliance or reporting non-compliance, the statement was made that we left money on the table. Are you telling us that over the course of those two, three years of that time window, the twenty to today, because we were not reporting our efficiency or our budget percentage appropriately, we left somewhere in the order of a hundred times three? So that's back to the three to four hundred thousand dollars that was being spoken of? And my second part of my question is, is there a vehicle for retroactivity that we can have a conversation with the state and claw back that money?
No.
I adam and firmly disagree that we ever left any money on the table and that there was any non-compliance.
So that was a false observation that we heard?
Yes.
Thank you.
And as far as clawing back any money. If we had been in a situation where because of COVID and because of the number of students that were on a bus, we had had to put more buses back in operation, and they froze this budget rating, it would have been to our advantage. But because we had, we had just reduced the number of buses and we didn't need to add those buses back, it caught us in a bad situation.
We've never really gotten credit for the buses that we parked when we consolidated routes for the middle and elementary students.
That's.
Because of the pandemic.
But that's where the math is not kind in my head, right? We reduce the number of vehicles. We're transporting the same number of students.
So your efficiency goes up.
So your efficiency goes up. Why did we get the benefit?
Because of the pandemic, the world was in just such a disarray, even with, you know, we had kids coming on an A B day. Some kids in some systems weren't coming face-to-face at all for the longest time, and, and that's what Sharon referenced, as we were held harmless. Nothing with that formula happened during the pandemic, because nothing was true. There was no true picture of a five-day week for all students riding buses.
So are we voicing our disagreement with the auditors and having that audit report, which is a public report, amended to reflect the mischaracterizations that we claim are in play?
Do you think that the, the misconception was more in what they wrote or what they said? Well, I guess that we could ask them to go back and rewrite that portion of the, of the audit if we wanted to.
I think that should come from the board chair making that request. If, if you all felt that something was misrepresented in that, then that's really who the request should come from.
Okay.
I think that it's significant. We were left with an impression there was multiple hundred thousand dollars of miss, that we were not funded. that we were not funded because of non-reporting compli- or compliance, reporting non-compliance. And if that's not the case, then that needs to be.
Well, there was nothing we reported incorrectly.
It's not because we didn't report correctly, it was because we didn't have a person in place reporting in the first place. Was what was presented.
There was never a year that we did not use any, that we did not use every cent their state allotment.
And we have met requirements for submitting all reports.
Yes. What they, I think the impression I got from them when we talked to them was they, they wanted us to keep putting larger and larger amounts of of local money into the program to up that funding base. But you're never going to get that first local money that you put in back. You have to put that in there. And why inflate expenses just to get more state money? Because you're having to put that local money in there. Maybe this would be a good example. The year that we went four days a week, we struggled to spend every bit of our state money, but we did it. John and I worked together and we did it. If if they had not held us harmless, even at the ninety four percent, we would have lost money because you're always going to be multiplying that fu- those expenses by your efficiency rating. So if you spent the same amount of money one year, you've you've got to be able to kind of determine what your expenses are going to be and what your efficiency rating is and maximize. But you shouldn't just inflate expenses. Did I confuse everybody with that? If you spent.
I think that we should have a, maybe it's a HODGIA committee conversation, or perhaps it's a policy committee conversation, but we, or an audit committee conversation, we should have a a view of that audit and the verbiage that's in question and ask for clarification.
And all of you, all of you have that.
Yeah.
It was provided to you uh in an electronic format on that agenda.
It was our first board meeting.
I think, I think that it would be very beneficial. If the budget committee wants to meet or somebody, and let Kevin actually go through this with you. And let him show you the simulator and how it's determined. And he says that he thinks that we are putting enough local money in. I think that um maybe he can be a little more eloquent than I was uh a about it.
And it'd be helpful to tie that to the audit report that we had to make sure that we have full traceability between what we're doing, what the audit observed, and that we can address any concerns of non-compliance that have been brought up and make sure that we're in line.
Sharon, I think it would be appropriate to have Kevin. I know that when I interviewed Kevin for the position, I shared information from the audit with him as far as areas where I felt like we needed to work. And uh some were more immediate areas than others. I think that to make sure we uh have shared the full report with him and have him look at this part about the funding and see if he has concerns. And if so, talk to the board chair. And at that point, the two of them get together and decide if there is something that we would ask a- ask to be clarified or rewritten.
That's reasonable, I would just add one add-on to your statement.
Okay.
It's just not the funding, it was the reporting compliance level that drove and triggered the funding response statement. That that was the mechanism that we saw that we were missing because by not having a transportation director on board, we were not posting all of the pertinent information in reports, and therefore there was a non-compliance option.
Okay.
And that tied to, that that's, my memory link on this, I don't have the document in front of me.
If we were not, if we were not reporting everything that we needed to report, DPI would be calling up.
Understand. And that's why, what I'm remembering from that audit was tied to such a statement.
And that's, that's why I'm here tonight, because I think it was unfair to several of us.
Yeah. And Ms. Mahaffey, thank you so much for that clarification of all of that. I know I even had a constituent reach out to me and you promptly addressed. And and tonight with the presentation, it helped just make it that much more clear, another part of transparency and communication for our constituents to understand all of the processes and those kinds of things. So thank you so much.
Well, a term that I had not heard was budget rating. I have always heard efficiency rating, but then did you see the way Sharon tied that in to a later slide? It's the same thing, the budget rating and the efficiency rating are the same, it's just interchanged in what it's called, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey.
Thank you, great job, Sharon.
This time I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. The first bullet on my report, I have listed uh in the executive session a list of meeting dates for the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four school year. Those dates are for Board of Education meetings, principals' meetings, and county commissioners' meetings. And as far as the commissioners' meetings, all that they have shared at this point is through December of twenty three. I couldn't find any dates for the year two thousand twenty four. An asterisk on that chart indicates that there is a change in the normal meeting schedule. This is an example. The November meeting, the second Tuesday in November, that is the same date as the School Board Association Conference. So because I hope all of you or some of you, Deborah and I will be at the conference, we can't hold a meeting that Tuesday, okay? So anytime you see an asterisk, it means that something has changed from the normal meeting schedule. I would ask all of you to please open that document, take a look at it. We used the calendar that was approved and tried to make sure we didn't land on some some bad dates, but if any of you see something or if you have concerns, please let me know immediately because we will start sharing that information with our leaders throughout the system. The second bullet in my report pertains to facilities updates. The Bethlehem Roofing Project is expected to take ninety days, and of course, that is dependent upon weather. That project is scheduled to begin tomorrow. So the roofers are going to be out at Bethlehem tomorrow. And just know that when you drive by, don't, don't be alarmed that you see people up on the top of that roof. And Mr. Draper, I know you're going to be happy that they're going to arrive tomorrow. Four contractors attended the non-required pre-bid meeting for the Sugarloaf Elementary Gym Project. The bid opening will be on June twenty seventh at two o'clock in this boardroom. For anybody who wants to attend, Pinnacle will be here with us and we'll do a bid opening. We are awaiting the architects' plans for the Transportation Department, the West Alexander Middle School HVAC replacement project, and the Student Success Center addition. Did you hear Ms. Johnson say tonight, that building was not built to accommodate as many children as we're having in there? And so, you know, that's a possibility moving forward in future years. Also, I think this might be interesting to you. Maintenance employees are going to go to the old Wittenberg facility tomorrow at nine for a building walkthrough. If any of the board members want to see the condition of that building, many of you probably have not been there in a long time or have never been in that building. If you want to see that, please be at the old Wittenberg facility tomorrow morning at nine. The replacement of the tennis courts will start in early July. We will be shutting down all of the tennis courts the last week of June. And the reason for that is we have to remove the fencing because we're not going to do a, just a fix-the-crack kind of thing. We will be tearing out all of the old courts and replacing those with brand-new courts. So we're going to communicate that closure to the public during the next two weeks so that people don't show up expecting to use the tennis courts because all of that's going to be roped off and it will not be usable at all after the last uh, but well, it will not be usable even that last week of June, okay? Bullet number three. I read an interesting opinion piece in the Tennesseaux Times as a result of my report made during the May meeting. I want to clarify a few things from my comments. First and foremost, a quality, well-rounded educational experience is expensive. And the loss of public school funding to expand opportunity scholarships for private schools was my major concern that night. I never, I repeat, I never told parents where to enroll their children. I do think this is a parent's choice, wholeheartedly believe that. However, I do not support using public tax dollars to fund options outside of public schools. Charter schools are public schools and held to many of the same standards for traditional public schools. Did you hear me say many of the same standards? Not all, so I have a little beef with that, but anyway. Then secondly, testing is not the mission of the Alexander County School System either. The North Carolina General Assembly determines the accountability model for public schools. And in this model, it is determined if a school is high or low performing, the school is given a letter grade, A to F, based on an eighty-twenty model for testing achievement and growth. Private and homeschools are not held to the same standard by any stretch of the imagination. Lastly, I also know that we have a responsibility to provide every child with the best possible education possible. It is my belief that the Alexander County Public School System is the best option to do that. However, the current legislative and political climate are making our mission increasingly more difficult. As witnessed in every school report provided monthly, our faith partners and churches throughout the county are highlighted for the support they provide to our schools. This is not a public versus private school debate. We can debate that another day. The issue is a legislated budgetary problem with negative implications of fairness due to the decreased funding for education for children enrolled in this public school system. Period. And then bullet number four. Date reminders for the remainder of the month. You just thought you were finished, but you're not, you're not. Please mark your calendars. Summer school graduation at the ACHS Versity Gym will be held on June twenty second. Has that time been determined, Mr. Lael? Six P M, let's get that in our notes. I'll remind you again before the twenty second, but please make sure that you know that that graduation's taking place. The construction bid for the o- for, excuse me, the construction bid opening for Sugarloaf is June twenty seventh at two in this room. Speed of trust training for all board members and central office administration, June twenty eighth from nine until four thirty, that is all day, nine until four thirty. And then there will need to be, Mr. Chairman, a special call meeting to approve the construction bid after that opening. I am proposing that we do that on June twenty ninth at five o'clock here at the Board of Education. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Dr. Heffner, I'd just like to add, I know this is um the voucher program is is such a hot topic in our community. I really think the legislators and lawmakers just want us pitted against each other is what my belief is, and I think it's all political. Our faith community helps our schools so much.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I think the biggest problem that a lot of us have, and I'm speaking for, I I'm not going to speak for y'all, okay, but the biggest problem that I see is um the rules are just not the same. And if we're going to let our parents have a choice in education and we're going to have um non-public schools with these rules, if we're all given the same amount of money, why don't we just let the public schools have their own rules that's even with the non-public schools? And we are smart people and we will spend our money correctly. Um, I I just, I I don't, I hate this because it's, it's our county's so small and it's, i- it pits people against each other and I hate it. Um, I just think the lawmakers are sitting in Raleigh and don't really care about any of us. And I thought I have to say today.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'd like to recognize Chairman Mahaffey for proposed Board of Education Policy Revision Second Reading.
We have six policies that were up for um second reading tonight. I asked that we remove policy thirty-two twenty, technology in the education program. In discussions with Kim Bishop, there are parts of that I think we need to uh investigate a lot further. And since I haven't really had the time to do that with closeout, I'd like to remove that and then ask you that we uh approve the remaining policies. Student Promotion and Accountability, thirty-four twenty. Graduation Requirements, thirty-four sixty. Extracurricular Activities and Student Organizations, thirty-six twenty. Uh, Children of Military Families, forty-fifty. And Age Requirements for uh Initial Entry, forty-one hundred.
Board members, what's the pleasure of the board for?
Second.
We have a motion from Board Member Agüez, second from Board Member McLean to approve policy number thirty-four twenty, thirty-four sixty, thirty-six twenty, forty fifty, and forty-one hundred. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policies carry. And I'll recognize Ms. Mahaffey again for Board of Education First Policy, excuse me, Board of Education Policy Revisions First Reading.
Okay, we have nine policies up or revision uh for the first reading. And I will ask for input on those and bring them back next slide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time I'll recognize Crystal Hope for our Career and Technical Education Program Updates and uh Local Plan Applications.
Beautiful word, Dr. Heffner. Tonight's presentation is a little bit different than when I came to you in February. Done the highlights and pictures and videos, but tonight is actually an update um in our local plan. So we will need, and I've attached that for you in your board docs. So that's the long sixty-page document, which I'm sure you guys have all perused, but I want to share some highlights with you guys. Um, so it's more data-driven uh than probably what I would usually do. So a- again, just um approval for our local plan is the business tonight. Next slide, please. Just going to start with our mission. You guys probably have all seen and heard Trace now, but um love this, love this young man. Um, and boy, he exemplifies uh the mission of CTE, inspiring students for a future with purpose and passion. And I worked with uh Mr. Lewis back there and Ms. Fox, our career development coordinators, to come up with that. And we have um presented that to our staff, CTE staff, on several occasions this year. Uh, next slide, please. So the local plan um was actually, it is developed uh to be in compliance with the Perkins Five Leg- Legislation, which is the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty-First Century Act. So the local application serves as our district's planning document and our application for state and federal funding. The local application is a two-year plan. So the first year, you go through a comprehensive local needs assessment um and identify, you know, some of your gaps and strategies. Uh, so I completed that last year. The second year, uh we review the data and strategies and act. The second year, uh, we review the data and strategies and actually we met, um, all of our benchmarks. So really, we just have complete, uh, continued our goals that we developed last year. The areas on the right side of that slide, those are the areas, those one through six, um, are things that we must address and look for in our local needs assessment. So we're looking at our CTE concentrator data, uh, graduation data, uh, how they do on their CTE states tests. But we also have to look at alignment to, uh, labor market needs, size and scope of our programs, our career pathways. Recruitment and retention of our employees. And then, uh, a large part of that is access and equity to our programs. So next slide. Again, just as a review, our program areas, we have the five program area, two course in CTE. Now that's different depending on pathways. So we heard earlier about the carpentry pathwa- pathway, if you're going into carpentry or masonry. You take Construction Core, Carpentry One, Carpentry Two, that's a three-course pathway. And then students are considered a concentrator. However, other pathways like Apparel One and Two, um, Foods One and Two, those pathways are two-course concentrators or pathways. So sometimes the pathway is two, sometimes it is three. But this graphic actually shows, um, all of our concentrators and students can be more than one concentrator. So we have some students who are a concentrator in ag and construction. Or in human services and in, uh, our health sciences. So, uh, this actually shows that duplicate data. But, uh, what I want to point out is that our concentrator number is increasing. And I know for Mr. Lewis and I, that's a number that we are watching because. Both of us, we believe that students need to go into CTE and explore those different areas. But then we want them getting deeper into that content area and skills. We don't wanna see him going over, you know, family consumer science, uh, arts, health sites, you know, all these different classes. Let's find an area and go deeper in that area. Um, so you'll see the con- the total concentrators increased from three hundred and seventeen in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. So that's that large, uh, blue graph, um, or bar graph. And then went up to three hundred and ninety-three in twenty-one, twenty-two. So, um, most of our program areas did see growth, um, ag from sixty-nine to seventy-two, architecture and construction seventy-two to a hundred and five. Um, the, the ones that you see there that did not, business management, um, that includes our entrepreneurship. And, um, some years we just don't have enough to make a full class of entrepreneurship too. So, um, we will be, we will have a number this year, but actually in twenty-one, twenty-two, it was five or less, so it wasn't reported. Um, I also wanna point out on their informational tech, that is gonna incomplet- include our computer science courses in the future. And we've had one, uh, Level Two this year, um, and are projected to have two next year. So our computer science program, I'm gonna give a shout-out to Becky Cole, she's doing, uh, a great thing, uh, there, so I expect to see those numbers go up. Uh, next data that I want to show you, yes ma'am, um, I'm often asked, okay, can we have whatever program? Let's add, you know, what, what are our numbers looking like? So this is strictly showing how many seats we have available and how many course requests we have for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So that takes into account the seats available is the number of staff we have, um, plus the, uh, ca- class size that, um, the state mandates. So in ag, you'll see that, um, we had four hundred and ten seats available, requests were four hundred and fifty-six. So there are forty-six students that will not get into an ag class, that that was their first choice. Business, you'll see we have twenty-one seats still left in classes there. In family consumer science, notice that we have a difference of negative seventy-two. Um, we were meeting with Mr. Lael and his administrative team and counselors. And, uh, I shared with him and those folks that the counselors are gonna have a lot of work this summer. Because they're gonna have to figure out where a hundred and three students that wanted Foods One are going to go. Um, now there are seventy-two slots in family consumer science, but that might mean they have to go to a child development or an apparel one class. So they're not getting that first-choice class. Um, health science, you'll see we do have nineteen, uh, slots available there. Um, uh, some of that does get into your upper level, our foundations of health science and health science one is pretty full. And then sometimes students start backing off, our nursing fundamentals, um, will be full. Uh, and our pharmacy tech program is staying strong as well, and that, this was the first year, uh, that we offered that. And our trade, trades program, and, uh, Mr. Robinson, I know this will be, uh, good information for you, we actually have some room in trades. Um, with our partnership with CBCC, we, uh, they are teaching our electrical program, so we've been able to hire another core teacher. Uh, so we are, actually have some seats available. Now, I will say some of those seats are available with our fire tech two and three classes. Um, so, you know, some students don't want to go all the way through that. But, um, anyway, I just kinda wanted to show you those numbers. Um, and if we really look at that, we would have a total of sixty-one seats that are available. A hundred and eighteen unfield requests, so we do have a deficit of fifty-seven requests. So where do those students go? Well, they're not in CTE, so, you know, that's where, um, with the master schedule, they're looking at other pathways, ROTC, arts, et cetera. For where students will be taking classes. So if you hear from the, or you have a child and they say, why, why didn't my child get into a class? Um, those are our numbers and we're gonna get into budgets here in just a, just a minute. Um, so we're pretty much maxed out in, in what we're offering, um, you know, there's some spaces, but again, uh, not a whole lot there. Uh, celebrations from our, uh, needs assessment that I really just wanted to highlight quickly. Career development, um, again, with having two folks devoted to career development in our middle and high school has been huge. And I'm gonna highlight some of those in just a minute. Increasing credentials, we had several cred- credentials that we offered for the first time this school year. The state is allotting a specific amount of money. To the tune of sixty-something thousand dollars for credentials only. I will be honest and tell you, we cannot spend all of that credential money. We will be reverting back money to the state. Now, talking about money that we have to le- leaving on the table hurts my heart. Um, but that is a pot of money that, uh, they fund us over a hundred percent for our credentials. Some of our courses have a state test and up to three credentials aligned in them. So we do make a choice on what credentials we offer, and I say we, but Ms. Ford is a, a fine example of, um, there is one credential. Um, OSHA safety that they are not giving to nursing students. However, they are giving, um, lots of other credentials in there. So we do make some choices, however, we get funding for those, uh, credentials, so. Uh, but I'm very proud of, of what we are offering, um, in drafting, our Revit and Inventor Food Safe Plate. Um, early childhood and counseling credentials, so lots of new credentials. And then community partnerships, and I didn't list all those, that, this isn't the, the, the time for that. But, um, we have had wonderful participation in our advisory meetings. Um, invite you guys to be a part of that too, but also just in our career, uh, expos that we've had in the middle school and high school. Uh, next slide, just a few things about our career development in high school. And, uh, these are activities that occur beyond the CTE classroom. So I'm not gonna go through all those, but, uh, a couple of things that I do wanna point out, pretty proud of. Um, for the first time, uh, students at the high school do have career development plans. Now, it was a little rough there for a little while, wasn't it, Mr. Lael, with, uh, getting everybody access in Google and too many, uh, people in the site? But, um, we do have rising tenth through twelfth graders with a career development plan started. So they've taken some interest inventories, they're starting to highlight their, uh, four-year plans. Um, and you'll see that we continue that in middle school. Um, the job shadowing process, um, have really appreciated, uh, seeing students complete that. It was a small number, but we had, uh, one young lady who went to, uh, Ellendale, actually with a speech therapist. We had a, a young man, uh, shadow in the forestry service and one went to the clerk of court. So just great opportunities for students and, uh, Mr. Lael approves those and, uh, just like they would for a college day. And, um, proud of students for, for doing those work-based, uh, learning activities. Um, we also had some meetings with our undecided seniors. And so, you know, as, as they're doing all these Google forms, are you enrolled and listed employee? We have some who say, I don't know. And so our career development coordinators, uh, met with them and did some interest inventories and, you know, helped them explore some, some opportunities as well. And of course, then our, uh, career expo was a huge success with over thirty, uh, local industries. We actually had two show up that we didn't have on our list, uh, so we had to find a spot, but it's a good problem to have. Went on to our middle school, very proud of a lot of things in middle school, um, Zello. I'm gonna say that word, but if you have a middle school student at Easter West, uh, we've started using Zello for career development plans. The intention is to roll that up to ninth grade, but we were able to use that Zello data through course registration. Um, and really try to target students more, you know, everybody wants to take Foods One, we just saw that. Um, so maybe if we had students who thought they were gonna cook every day in that class, but it really wasn't one of their aptitude or skills. We could kinda have some conversation for those students. We had completely got that, uh, situation worked out, but it, it, it's a work in progress. Um, we had a career fair for sixth through eighth grade students. It was wonderful having, um, our business partners in there. Uh, we did a CBCC reverse fair, uh, which was great. Um, instead of taking eighth graders there, we actually had the programs come in, um, a- and speak to our students. And then we did eighth-grade industry tours. Um, so just some great efforts in our middle school. Uh, next slide. Some things that we are hearing that is coming down to those legislative ma- mandates and state priorities, we're trying to be proactive on that. Right, that goes along with the career development plans. Uh, legislation is likely to pass that every student would have to have a CDP and s- by seventh grade, revised again in tenth grade. So, uh, we are staying up on that and trying to be proactive there. Expansion of CTE in middle grades and upper elementary. CTE is only funded grade eight through twelve. Eight through twelve, however, we are supposed to provide services six, twelve, and they would like us to provide it to fifth grade as well. So we, um, that is something you talk about, something to help support.
Right.
Anytime you get the opportunity, we are advocating, and state CTE folks are as well, I was actually on a webinar today. And we were talking about some of these legislative mandates, but, um, they're gonna mandate some of these things in fifth grade, but we are not funded for seventh grade. They're talking about a career exploration course for students in middle school, again, we're funded eight through twelve. Um, and then another one is our computer science, they're talking about requiring a computer science course for graduation, which I think is great. Um, again, um, hopefully that's not an unfunded mandate. So we're trying to be proactive, we do have computer science discoveries in our middle schools. Right now, um, in seventh grade, we may have to look at that alignment, depending on what the bill, um, passes. Uh, because it says it can be taken in middle school or high school. So we're just trying to be proactive and really watch legislation and see what we need to do with those things. Okay, Brian, I said I was gonna try to use technology, click the button. All right, um, all right, funding, and I know it's been a long night, so, um, thi- this is a lot, uh, next slide. Okay, so I've tried to put a chart on here about how CTE is funded. Um, we, we have three main pots of money. So in the blue is our O-seventeen federal dollars, so you'll see the allotment for the last couple of years. The O-fourteen is our state instructional dollars. And then O-thirteen, PRC O-thirteen is our months of employment. So again, the thirteen and fourteen, that state allotment is what I'm talking about, that we're funded grade eight. Um, you will notice on the right side, uh, the yellow column, I've noted other grants that we have received. If it, if it said CTE and grant in it, we were writing it and submitting it. And we received most of what we not maybe fully funded, but we received, uh, a lot of the grants that we, uh, applied for. Um, so a summary there of our funding, you'll see that, um, our state and federal instructional dollars have slightly increased for next year. Woo-hoo! Um, however, our months of employment have continued to decline. And so that's where we're feeling the heat. You know, how can we expand when our months of employment has decreased?
And that is based on ADM, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the declining ADM is what is affecting this?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, we're tied to the number of seats you're filling in CTE, it's all ADM-driven.
Correct, yes, correct. And I put the formula for you on there because they do give us a base, um, for, for both of those. Um, and then what you get additional is that allotment, yes. Um, and what we're able to do, and, um, you'll see, prior to me, I, I was looking at a budget, I had two hundred and sixty-one months of employment. And I was like, oh, I wanna live in those days. Um, but when you have months of employment that are, are not assigned, that equates to money. And Sharon is, helps us, uh, wonderfully how to, helps me, uh, navigate how to move that money around to best, uh, meet all the needs of our programs. Well, we're not gonna have a whole lot to move around, uh, next year. Um, and so that's what I wanted to point out, I know as you're having budget talks and, and that kinda stuff, that's, that's the where, where we are. CTE is kind of been, it's, it's not been affected, um, or, or it's been able to, there, there've been different grants that we've been able to write. To, um, to kinda cover that. Um, next year, we are, or actually this year, they said that a huge grant, fifty thousand dollar grant for our career development, uh, it will no longer be. Now, it is in legislation that, to continue, you know, trying to push for that. But again, as you're talking about ways to support, um, we can't do some of these things outside of the classroom, have these wonderful events. Um, have these, uh, career development plans. You've got to have somebody driving that for it to be quality, uh, a program. Um, it's just not something that we can push out on a teacher to do. So the next slide, um, and, and there's red on here because just to be quite honest with you, CTE budgets are a real concern for me for next year. With the loss of months of employment and the loss of the O-sixty-four grant alone, that fifty thousand dollars. Will be starting the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with a reduction of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. Now that includes the little bit of gain, you know, four thousand, is it five hundred and sixty-nine dollars in O-fourteen. So, um, it's a challenge. It's a challenge and, uh, you know, you guys, you guys hear that already and, um, I, I met with Dr. Hefner earlier and shared these concerns as well. So, uh, that, that's what we're tasked with, with right now. There's still a lot of things going on in the legislature, uh, I realize. Um, you know, will there be grants set aside for some of these things and I'm hopeful, fingers crossed.
Well, the best question to ask a member of the General Assembly is how in the world could you require? CTE involvement in grades five through twelve, really? But you have cut fifty thousand dollars to have a career development coordinator for middle schools. So again, more unfunded mandates, that's where you all can advocate for this school system. Is to ask some of those hard questions. How can you require this, but you cut this?
Well, and the, the flexibility piece of that as well, and I, I did not mean to interrupt Dr. Hefner, but just like I said about credentials. We want to provide those opportunities to students. However, if there were more flexibility on credential funds could also buy materials to prepare the students or teachers for those credentials. Um, but we don't have that flexibility. And so the, the cut that, where we're gonna fill this is in the instructional supplies for our teachers, the, the equipment. And so again, CTE's kind of been untouched, uh, but it's, it's here, um, and.
I think this goes along with what Dr. Hefner said about providing the best possible education. With your metrics demonstrating, you've got a lot of people, a lot of kids that won't into these programs next year. And these are the leaders of our community, these are the plumbers, the electricians, the laborers. And that's what we provide, and the private schools aren't gonna provide that. Um, and I appreciate everything you're doing, and, you know, we need to figure out, um, how to help you, um, find this money, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, and, and I, I hope that what I, I was trying to show, especially in the yellow is, so, middle school, they. What has happened so far is, as they've said, you need to. so middle school, they, what has happened so far is, as they've said, you need to provide these services, they will make a modernization grant available. Um, it's a competitive grant. So they'll say two million dollars is available. Whoever applies for it will split it up and tell you how much. So I applied for a hundred and five thousand dollars, I think, a hundred and ten thousand. And we received fifty thousand this past year. Um, so I've seen some of the wording in the legislation about, uh, bills that may include the modernization grant, may include the career development coordinator grant. Um, and so that's why part of what I wanted to highlight from the, from the local plan is, um, I, listen, talk about quality CTE programs. I don't think you'll find better than what Alexander County Schools offers. Um, and, and I kinda knew that as an AP there, but in this position, uh, the, the staff, what they do with students, it's, it's phenomenal. Um, a- and you're right, I, I don't want to go less than that. Um, you have a student that's getting ready to be there. I have one next year and one the following year. And I know the programs that they want to be involved in. And I don't want to tell any child, you can't be a part of a program.
When we are telling children they can't be part of particular course material, um, where we have more demand than supply available. What's the selection criteria? Who gets in, who doesn't?
So it's different, honestly, based on different courses. So what we do, I'll give you an example in agriculture. So we went back and said, okay, we're ag, we're only gonna put, uh, ninth graders, possible tenth graders in ag. Let's put the upperclassmen in natural, it's not a required course for that pathway. So let's put students in natural resources one and two, animal science one and two. The reality is, we've had to scratch equine one and two, that's been a course offering. Um, and we're just not able to do that anymore. So, um, we're going back, every process is a little bit different. How will we do it for family consumer science? We'll look at what those students have put for their second or third. Um, and then hopefully we can get it at another time that they'll get that foods requirement. Um, a lot of times, if there's a ninth grader who requests foods, they're not gonna get in it. It's gonna be, um, a tenth, eleventh, twelfth grader.
Okay, but it's an, it's an equitable decision-making process, so.
Correct. Right. Correct. Yes, it's not a, it's not a pick and choose. We actually, that was part of the meeting we sat with counselors is, okay, what's the next step into? And, and how do we identify what students? Um, it's, it's also based on, you say equity, but it's also based on student requests. Because, you know, if they have a Zello match that looks like they're headed towards, I'll use counseling and mental health, I haven't said that one. Um, and they put that as a second, um, alternate course, then we're gonna go ahead and have him try that and wait on the foods, uh, that kinda stuff. So it, it's equitable as far as criteria, but then every student, the counselors look at every student, uh, to see.
You have an age, grade level criteria element. You have an aptitude criteria element and you have a history, educational history criteria.
Correct. The first time that we've added the, any type of aptitude or inventory is with our rising ninth graders. We don't have that for upperclassmen yet, but I, um, so that we can have more things to choose from rather than, oh, let's kick them out. I mean, I, I don't ever want it to be that. Um, so we've had to look at, a- and there's reports that you run for every course. Everybody wants Scotty Cook's Ag Mechanics one and two. We created another section, Tyler Mitchell's gonna teach that. The reality is some students still won't get in that course. Um, we can only have twenty in that course per state. So, you know, we, we, we try to look at what those criteria are and, and individualize them. Oh, and I lost the last one. But I don't wanna end, I have to end on a high note.
That's right.
Last slide, um, that's right. We've got Isaac, our board, Isaac here, Mr. Lewis is taking him to Nationals Skills next week. And, um, I'm not gonna lie, he might've used ChatGPT for this quote when I asked him for one, but it was still good. Um, and it sounds like him. So he says, CTE has propelled me towards my professional goals, equipping me with practical skills and a strong foundation. And you know, that's what we want for all of, all students.
Yes.
Careers for all. And, uh, good luck to this young man as he competes for us in a.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mine is an action item, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna add something real quick, just so everybody realizes. Uh, one of the big things that jumps out to me, you mentioned the credentials. I got this list blown up, hunter safety, beef quality, NCCR, OSHA, North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal, Fire Ops, CPR, nurse aid, Microsoft Word and PowerPoint. You've got students from the high school that are serving our community. You know, and that's why, I want people to realize that a lot of times, you take, you take a nurse aid, those students can go straight from that school classroom. If they choose not to continue their education, can go to facilities here in our county and get a job. The OSHA is a make or break sometimes in the construction industry and sometimes even a few dollars more an hour. So what you do is very beneficial. I appreciate it. And you, I, I have a very close heart, big heart for CTE.
Randy, I wanna add the early childhood, you know, we've got his.
And I blew it off of that slide, you might've had something on that, cause that was twenty-one, twenty-two.
We have students now that can, um, graduate without early childhood credential, go right into as a lead teacher, uh, in our, and we know that there's, uh, people needed in all kinds of daycare, child centers.
Sure.
Trying to look at, talk about labor, labor market need, but where the need is and aligning. You know, we're not offering, oh, we wanna do basket weaving or whatever. I mean, it, it's aligned to the need that's out there and so students.
And the community college system on the state has looked even at these credentials to reward community co- uh, college course credit off of a credential. Where it used to be, you know, a different on grade stuff like, now the lifetime's even with credentials. So thank you for what you do, Mr. Lewis, Miss Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
And Miss McNeely. Uh, I, I don't want everyone to get hurt.
That's right. Team mom keeps it straight.
But, uh, this is an item that does require board action, uh, approval. Uh, what's the pleasure, board, for approval of the CTE local plan?
Good approval.
I think I heard a motion here. I'm gonna say a second, I think, right, Mr. Daganhart here. Uh, so, uh, what's, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Local plan carries. Thank you, Ms. Hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to recognize, uh, Dr. Danita Dowrevis for our updated twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four academic calendar.
Good evening. People are whispering quickly, quickly, and I will go quickly. So this coming fall, the bulk of our Alexander County Elementary teachers will complete the training called Letters That The State Mandated. That's Language Essentials For Teachers Of Reading And Spelling. And so we are trained with a company called Lexia. They train everybody statewide. And, um, they did not give us dates that they were available for the training until after we had adopted our calendar. So that means we need to make a co- couple minor revisions to our calendar. Basically what we're doing is, um, flipping a couple of days in August. We had the training day on the seventeenth. Instead, we'd like it to be on the eighteenth to meet that, um, schedule that Lexia gave us. And then, um, similarly in December, we had planned to train on the fourth. And this training is live, it's at the schools, but they have a virtual, a trainer who appears virtually, but presents live to open the learning for the semester and to close the learning for the semester. So we're proposing to move the fourth to the eleventh. So those are two minor adjustments we're asking you to approve tonight. It does not affect student hours and it does not affect teacher pay ta- paid dates. So. What's your pleasure?
Just move to a break.
Second. Got a motion, Board Member Ryan, second Board Member McLean. All those in favor of the revised calendar, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Like, uh, opposed, likewise, motion carries. All right, uh, at this time, I will recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our closing of Alexander County Virtual Academy.
Chairman Robinson, I, uh, gave you all a draft of just some of the information about the Virtual Academy. Then of course came back last month with just a couple of revisions from, uh, the parent questions, some of your questions and comments. And at this point, the board just needs to make a decision. I will say on behalf of the Budget Committee, we did make a request to the Commissioners for funding to keep the academy open. And even though they have not finalized their budget, they indicated that that would not be fulfilled. It would not be granted. So, um, the board just needs to take action tonight in deciding whether we close it or keep it open.
What is the, uh, recommendation? Do we have a recommendation from Board Member? I'll make a motion to close it.
I second.
Got a motion from Board Member Daganhart to close Alexander County Virtual Academy, a second from Board Member, uh, Reese. All those, any discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor of closers, Alexander County Virtual Academy say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This time I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner and Sharon Mahaffey for our contract between Alexander County Schools and Crosspoint Church for facility use.
Okay. Thank you again, Chairman Robinson. You have attached, uh, the contract that has been used this year with Crosspoint. This of course is for the old Head Start facility. Also you have, uh, a contract for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It would be, um, it would start July one of twenty-three and end June thirtieth of twenty-four. Uh, Sharon had conversation with the Minister of Crosspoint, uh, and, um, everything presented in this contract is exactly like the previous contract. Do you have questions?
I do.
Okay.
Um, has it ever come up that they wanted to buy the facility?
The question has been asked if they would be, if they would entertain buying the property? And they expressed interest.
Okay.
The problem is, and we are working to get, to get it so it could be put up for sale, okay? Because we have to do all this legally.
Mm-hmm.
We can't just sell it to them without advertising, that sort of thing. But what happened was when we started looking at deed work, that facility is still deeded onto the new Ellendale School property.
Okay.
So we are working to have it resurveyed and that old Head Start piece cut out and have a separate deed so that if the board so chooses to put that property up for sale, it's all clear and ready to go, uh, we could indeed do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board for approval of the contract for twenty-twenty-four?
Motion through.
Second. Motion, Board Member McLean, second Board Member Daganhart, in our discussion. All those in favor of approval of the Crosspoint contract, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to closed session. Per, uh, General Statute one, four, three, three, one, eight dot eleven, A six, we will, uh, entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion, Board Member Daganhart, second Board Member Reese, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll enter closed session.